And create a plan that's more advantageous and that more taxpayers benefit from because obviously expansion of a library more people could use, more people would probably be interested in. There is a table in here for you to look at, it presents the cost of the schools as well as the overall percentage of state reimbursement anticipated. Lillyby actually turns out to be the lowest reimbursement from the state when you compare it to the total project cost. So, oh, and then I'd like to mention that the soccer field at Lillyby is pretty heavily used and even for youth sports such as football in the fall. Lacrosse is becoming a big sport and the towns at Bride, the fields at Bride Brook are typically used for lacrosse this time of year and so the soccer field's used for soccer purposes. And taking away another field at Bride Brook, well, we'd be taking away a field and then relocating one again at Bride Brook, I think it would still decrease our field space that's available for youth sports activities. I have some questions with these things in mind. Is can the Nyannic Center Flanders project plan also be phased in two stages that would be similar to the LBH proposal of renovating Lillyby first and Flanders in about 10 years? Can the design plans be modified to reduce the cost of the NCS Flanders plan, like eliminate the amphitheaters? Because the NCS renovation is somewhat of a small project, can NCS be renovated without a mill increase to the town? Like if, is there enough debt coming off the records to undertake the NCS project? And if so, would that allow Flanders to be rebuilt sooner to address the problems there? And what else could Lillyby use for? Obviously Parks and Recreation would be able to use the gym, relocation of the lib, the youth center to allow expansion of the library, the education offices. And like, how can the elementary school project be designed in a way that would offer more benefits to the taxpayers as well? Let's see. And can the savings to operation and maintenance, obviously what's, which is going to occur once these buildings are renovated and closing a school be factored into the debt payment? I don't know how that is turned back into the town. And finally, I'd like to just say that I didn't purchase my house in Nyannic to reside in the Nyannic Center School District and I didn't purchase my house to patronize the downtown Nyannic restaurants. I moved to Nyannic from downtown Mystic to live in a quaint, functional town and in 2013, Nyannic was voted a fan favorite town over Mystic. I believe this happened because real people actually live here. Currently downtown Nyannic provides goods and services for the community and going forward, it will be especially important to maintain a balance between the community look and feel and a destination for tourists to visit. An important consideration in the closing of Nyannic Center School is the closing of Nyannic Center School and what will likely become of the property. Let's see, the First Selectment's blog, I'm almost done, identifies residents to be built within walk and distance of the village is one way to, to kind of up the downtown. But we know that there's not a lot of available space in the area and is Nyannic Center targeted for condominium complex or housing? And then I'd like to point out that it seems clear to me that it's anticipated that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance are going to endorse this plan or proposal to renovate Lillyby Haynes. Jeff Newton has already moved the principal of NCS to Lillyby and the students at NCS have been informed by school staff that their school is closing. An interim one-year principal has been appointed at NCS and on May 25th, Mark Nickerson spoke openly about the fact that he would approve the LBH proposal and this was done without hearing delegations, without considering the financial impact on the taxpayers as well as the overall impact on the community of Nyannic. I hope the Board of Selectmen thoroughly consider this matter and make a fully informed decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public delegations tonight? Okay. We've got to really be strict on the five-minute rule. We start the timer here. We're running over.
John Rhodes, 26 North Road. And I, I just want to say I appreciate everybody's attention to what everyone was saying. I do not agree with the new plan with the schools mainly because I don't think that it's giving the town all of the residents something with our tax money. I work hard for my money, I wanted to be there. Yes, my kids are in the school system, but one day they're not and I want to have facilities to be able to use when they're not around. So, my wish to you is that you do consider what some of the other folks have been saying, that there is a better way. There's a better way to spend our money, there's a better way to serve our kids and to serve this town. So I hope that you do truly think about it before you act. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Approval of the minutes, meeting May 18, 2016.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the May 18, 2016 meeting, yes, a minute.
Second. Any corrections? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of June 1, 2016, the amount of $2,742.91.
Second.
And seconded. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Interlocal agreement, by and between the Town of Eastlime and the Town of Waterford for the provision of animal control services. Folks, this is, this is a, something that's been long, long time coming here. We've had more of a handshake agreement with the Town of Waterford for several years now as we've shared an animal control officer further referred to as an ACO. As you know, we share the facility in Waterford and that agreement is they provide the facility, we provide the vehicle, they pay for the ACO, we reimburse them. That relationship is flip-flopping and they will still maintain the facility and we will still provide the vehicle, but we will hire the next ACO and they will reimburse us. And so we're kind of flip-flopping it, but we're also committing to paper and an agreement between the towns, our relationship and how reimbursement will occur and who's responsible for what. And frankly, Waterford's been more than generous, extremely generous with the, with the handshake agreement that we've had over the years. You know, a lot of the costs, a lot of the extras, we were not billed for. A lot of the fill-in, you know, when the ACO went on vacation, someone else had to step up. Waterford just kind of covered it through their police officers or, or volunteers. So I'm, this town has been entirely grateful to the Town of Waterford for the relationship we have had and will now continue to have in a different format. You've been, the Board of Selectmen were given the contract for perusal. Attorney Collins is here to review anything and she has fully vetted this contract, is prepared to respond to any technical questions. I can respond to any of the intentions of the language or the spirit of the agreement. So, does anyone in the Board of Selectmen have any questions for me? We will then open it up for public comment. I wanted to fully vet the information first before the public commented, should there be anybody who wishes to.
I'll lead up.
Mrs. Hardy.
Previously, as you stated, we were using a Waterford police officer who really did an outstanding job. I had some reservations about that when it first, when we first went to that agreement because obviously there was a great differential in what we were paying for a certified police officer compared to what we had been paying previously for the dog or animal control So this is an attempt to lay out what the duties of each community will be and part of that agreement is that we will take on the responsibility of hiring the animal control officer. So we're assuming some sort of equitable agreement here between ourselves and Waterford. What is the current rate for animal control officers in the region for payment?
It varies widely, ma'am, and that's because some towns do have a police officer, as we've been paying, who is making a hundred thousand plus dollars a year. This ACO that we went and, Anna, what was the going rate hourly? Was it?
In the $24.
$24 range for 35 hours a week is our anticipated cost. Now, we are also anticipating that at some point, point, we're going to need an assistant to the animal control officer who will be paid a somewhat less amount, but will be on call so when the ACO is on vacation, taking a day off, sick leave, et cetera, that we have someone else to care for the animals.
Okay. I was going to note that previously we did have a designated deputy dog warden.
Deputy dog.
Just so happened, it was a husband and wife team.
Yeah.
So we had a little bit of a problem when both.
They had their anniversary.
So this cost would be, the cost of this and benefits are going to be shared 50/50.
Correct.
All right. And Waterford is going to provide the facility.
As they do. And that's the current contract. As you know, we are also engaging in looking at other possibilities because we desperately need one.
Okay. So we've had conversation about that, that, and I think we agree that the existing facility really isn't adequate. However, this contract doesn't address that. Now, there is an exit clause here, I have the section marked. What happened, what's going to happen if we approve, let's say, the, the plan that's under discussion to utilize the, it's not Rodowski, what's the?
Corrigan.
Corrigan or somewhere else.
And Waterford doesn't want to do that.
Well, we haven't quite thought that one out. No, the, we would only build a facility at Corrigan with a three-town agreement as it's being proposed right now. There's currently a three-town search. Kevin is sitting on that commission, it's Eastlime, Waterford and Monville. And we could only afford to build a new facility with three towns or more.
Well, that's part of my concern that if we need the three towns to go in and we realize that this existing facility isn't adequate, what's, what's the solution if we want to do it and the other towns don't and we're in this contract?
I, we're in this contract until we need a new contract. Right now, for the facilities we have, the arrangement is, we have that facility, it's adequate, but it's not state-of-the-art and it's certainly not what will carry us to the future. We, we will work out that other situation, but in the meantime, we need an ACO. In the meantime, we need to have a better relationship committed to writing with our relationship with Waterford, which we have not had. So this is, and so the spirit is when we get to a new facility, we would have a new contract with a three-town contract or more, there's other towns that might want to jump in. And we would, we would expire this one and start a new one.
Well, partially that ends, that addresses my concern, but I still don't see, I don't see that reference here in the contract itself about one party withdrawing.
It says it in the beginning, maybe? It says, "Continuing until such time as it is amended or terminated by one or both parties."
I did read that.
Pursuant. So it sounds like we could get out of this anytime. Is that correct? Not interrupting.
All right. Yes. Hi.
You may have answered your own question and may not need me, but that is true, that opening paragraph gives you an out and, and what would happen is, as a practical matter, on page four of the agreement, under section six, at any time during the term of the agreement, Eastlime in the reason, in the reasonable discretion of Waterford, and then it lists certain things, we would simply give them notice, we're abandoning this contract.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Under section G, let me see if that's. The funds that have, the funds that might be donated for the new facility, let's see if that's a section. No, that's, okay. Two small letter I's. That's on the top of, top of page three.
That would help, just the page three would be great. Okay. Control.
Oversight and control of all charitable donations on behalf of the animals from both towns. So does this mean that we're going to split any of the donations that are made or the donations, if it's a, if a Waterford person makes a donation, it goes to Waterford? If an Eastlime person makes a donation, it goes to Eastlime, to those separate financial offices? Am I reading correctly?
It's going for, to the care of the animals at this point, any donations to any fund.
But there's an existing fund that people put money into.
And I think that has been separated.
That's, that's, yeah.
That's been separated and set aside for the building of a new facility. They are constantly getting, and this speaks to this, this speaks to, because it starts at G on the prior page.
Yes.
It talks about the responsibilities of the ACO. And the ACO is responsible to go to court and for all criminal matters and then the double I, oversight and control of charitable donations. They're constantly getting donations and that goes to the care of the animals at this point forward. It's not Eastlime dogs and Waterford dogs, it's the ACO of both towns and it goes to dog food and veterinary care when appropriate, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, we have separated the building fund monies out, kind of closed that out and any funding that goes into the ACO now will go into the care of the current animals at our facilities.
Thank you. Just a last little edit on page four, under section six, letter E, just a little technicality there, shall cease, it's repeated twice, just delete that for the final copy.
Oh, yeah.
Got it.
And I'm set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good eye on that, Teach. Thirty-nine years in the teaching business, this is how, you know, you got your red pen out on that, didn't you?
No, it's actually the yellow highlighter.
This is, this is, Hardy, you had some comments. Anyone else?
So, sure. So basically, we provide the car like we've been doing, the vehicle.
Yes.
They provide the, the building.
Yes.
We provide the maintenance, you know, respectively, and we split the costs. So is there any impact to the current budget besides that we're hiring someone, but that we're going to get the reimbursement?
There's no impact. There's no impact. There should be a savings, even if we go to a, a part-time ACO to, to assist the one we hire, we should see some savings because again, we're, we're hiring at a different level.
Right. The 24, we've got 44,000.
We're taking out the police union contract thing and then we're making it a, first of all, we're hiring, not, not Waterford, they're at a different pay scale on every job, frankly. Because we don't have a nuclear power plant. But, but also, we're, we're creating this ACO, it's not part of our police department, but a kind of its own department head who will take direction from the police, but also the First Selectmen.
Okay. So there's potential cost savings to it?
Cost savings all the way around.
So this is going to be hourly rate, period?
Correct.
On call, hourly rate, but we're still going to pay benefits?
He'll also have a regular work schedule. He or she will have an active.
People in this building have hourly rates and they, they're not on call. You're right. You know, the clerks leave at four o'clock, but, but they're hourly and they do get benefits.
Is that person's office going to be in Waterford?
Well, they'll be working out of the ACO mostly.
Right.
So, yeah, that's a good point.
Do we need to, is there an office space in there for the ACO officer?
I don't know.
Yeah. There's, if you want to call it an office, he has a.
It's a corner room.
Room.
Yeah.
Something that we probably find in a stall.
I mean, I'm fine with this, but do we need any language to assure that they'll be working out of there?
I don't. It hasn't come up as an issue.
I mean, that, that's where the dogs are going to be, are the animals going to be held? I wouldn't think it'd be to specify that. That's where you're going to have to, you know, clean the kennels and so forth.
Okay. And the status of the ACO officer right now, we, we have one right now?
We have a temporary interim ACO.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay. And once this is finalized and that will move forward for.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I have some.
Sure.
No, go, go ahead.
So with respect to the ACO, is this going to be another duty that's conferred upon a town employee that has some other role or is this going to be a separate position?
We, we are currently hiring for an ACO. It's a full-time position.
It'll be a full-time position.
And it's a standalone position, yeah.
Okay. And what are the requirements that this person should have that's going to hold this job? They're not going to be a police officer.
Correct.
But is there some other requirement, background that they're supposed to have?
We've already actually done the interviewing, so we've, we've gone through that part of it because we already threw the handshake, agreed to reverse the handshake, but we want to commit this to paper. In the meantime, we've put out, we put out a, a help wanted, if you will, and had 70 applicants for the job. We narrowed it down to six or seven interviews. Those were conducted last weeks, the last week. We took the three top choices through committee and their, their background checks are being conducted right now. State statutes allow them to carry a pistol, they don't need to, they don't need to be police officer. They, this person more likely will be a civilian, not a police officer, and they would have assistance from the police whenever necessary.
Well, that, that leads into my next question.
Okay.
So it will not necessarily be a police officer, probably will not be a police officer, but then on page two, paragraph G subsection I, it does talk about one of the duties of this individual would be in connection with criminal enforcement. So will this individual have the, the authority to arrest?
Not arrest, I think they write tickets, right?
They have the authority to just write infractions. And the only way that that person would have to go to court is if a person pled not guilty to a infraction.
So will be someone that has the authority to write an infraction ticket, but will not be a full police officer.
Won't have the custodial arrest.
Custodial arrest.
For an officer.
Correct.
And, and that's where the, the relationship with the, with the police department would come in if they needed that additional authority in a given situation, then they would call on the police.
Always, always. I need courage.
Yep. And then on page three, again, on double I at the top of the page that Mrs. Hardy was, was making reference to. I know that there's this issue with this other fund that was set up to rebuild the dog kennel. Is this language an attempt to deal with that other issue or is that somehow being kept totally separate from the authority? But it looks like you're granting the ACO quite a bit of oversight over donated funds and could the argument be made that pulls in that money and the, the ACO would have the authority to do something with it?
Just since I'm working on that.
Yeah.
The monies that's been donated specifically for the construction or reconstruction of a new facility.
Yes.
Totally separate. The ACO would not have any access to those funds at all.
I mean, what I envision is someone making that argument.
No, I mean, he can't, it's, it's two different funds, he would not, he or she would not have access to the funds in the account for reconstruction or rebuilding or purchasing property for a new facility.
So the view is that that money would be totally separate?
It is.
And this would be any future money donated?
Correct.
By charitable individuals?
Which is nice to know, there's still a whole lot of nice people out there that do donate to animal facilities, town facilities, and a whole lot of people. And it comes in weekly, so that this person will be responsible for that, including the financial ledger of said donations. Thank you.
So just briefly getting back to Attorney Cunningham's question, what background experience were you looking for? You said you've already conducted the interviews. How was this position described and what skill sets, past experience were used in selecting the finalists?
I don't have the job description in front of me. I'll tell you that we were looking for ACO experience or, you know, very proper canine experience, et cetera. I'll tell you, we had over a dozen ACOs currently, current ACOs or people working for ACOs or in the animal control business apply. We've, we had an enormous amount of experienced people. We had a wealth, a pool of great, great experience. So I'll, I'll tell you that five of the six interviews were ACO, current ACOs in the area or, you know, people working for Animal Control Department in, in local area and one was a police officer.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I understand you to say that Selectmen Siri worked on this?
Not on this. I'm talking, I'm just talking about the.
He's on a subcommittee for the facilities.
For the facility, not.
Thank you.
That's why I spoke to that.
I'll open up a public comment to this specific item. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Elizabeth Murphy, 30 Saunders Drive. I hadn't intended to do this tonight, but listen, I just have to. To begin with, I would like to agree with Ms. Hardy that the last ACO office that we had was just an absolute perfect delight to work with, with the public and everything. He couldn't have been better. And having been involved with ACOs since at least 1971, '72, as Mrs. Hardy has, I can tell you that not having a police officer as an ACO is an absolute total mistake. It's just absolutely, in my opinion, not worth thinking about. We need one. It puts too much pressure on the police when they get called to scenes, they're called in and out all the time if the ACO does not have arresting or any kind of controlling powers. It can just be an absolute disaster. And with more than 30 years of experience, I can tug it. And I can also say that I think this agreement needs a little bit more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Anyone else like to speak for the public? Very well. Anyone else? Okay.
Sure. Okay. I'll move ratification of it. Resolved to authorize the First Selectmen in the name and on behalf of the Town of Eastlime to execute an interlocal agreement by and between the Town of Eastlime and the Town of Waterford for the provision of animal control services and to execute such other documents as may be needed or desirable to implement said agreement.
Second. We have a motion that's been seconded. For the comment?
Yes. Relative to Ms. Murphy's comments, as I had said, said previously that going from someone, an animal control officer who had basically a love and care for animals and personal experience, but really it was sort of time for him to, time for him to retire. We then went from sort of a small home time guy to a full-fledged police officer. We then went from sort of a small home-time guy to a full-fledged police officer. Cost us a lot more money, but it was very professional, very professionally handled. And that sort of led me to think about exiting this agreement, and that was why I raised the question about exiting the agreement. If we find that this is not a good plan, and we should go back to having a police officer that has immediate arresting powers, that's immediately on the scene, how much notice do we have to give if we find out that this isn't working? This person isn't going to be under contract, person is going to be, or is the person going to be under contract?
Well, he's going to be hired, he's going to be an employee, so I suppose we can eliminate the position and he collect, he or she would collect unemployment, because we could always do that, or we could find him or her unsatisfactory in their job. I'll tell you, and with great respect to Mrs. Murphy, I don't know if it's a local town that has a police officer as the ACO right now. I interviewed several local ACOs. Inch the animal control officer of a town. New London. I don't know about the Groton one. I know people who are working for the ACO, I didn't meet the ACO. Montville. Salem, I don't think has one right now. They're looking to maybe partner up with us and jump into this, especially if we get to two people. So I, you know, there's towns that do it different ways. But I think the trend, especially with the cost of police officers, and their requirement of being so fully trained to be a police officer, and the amount of continuous training and education that goes into being a police officer, that you're using just a small 10% portion of their training to be an ACO, which is really the care, you know, 90% of that job is the caring of the animals, which is cleaning out the cages and feeding. So I think that's why the towns are moving in this direction and partnering with the police departments, but hey, I don't know. I don't know.
I can speak to, if you're gonna, if you get to a scene and you feel as if there's some contentious, if something's contentious, even if you're a sworn officer, you're going to ask for backup, you know, and I can speak to 30 years of experience of doing that. If you feel as if something's not right, whether you're going to ask for backup, and you're going to wait to take any action to get some assistance. And I'm sure that the ACOs that we have would be able to sense that, are the ones that we're interviewing. I think we have to trust that on that panel, there were police officers on the panel asking the question, so I think there's, you know, a level of comfort with what they decided as well as far as hiring someone. And again, if you feel as if something's wrong, even if you're a sworn officer, you're going to ask for backup before you take any type of action unless it's a dire emergency.
This person is authorized to carry a weapon?
Yes, by state statute.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Is that a, is that a personal firearm, or is that a town?
I would think a personal firearm.
It's a personal firearm. It's not an issued permit.
Not part of our force.
Okay.
And this would take effect immediately upon signing by both first selectmen?
I think we'd work it out as far as what the exact date would be with signing this. We have to hire somebody still, and then when do we flip? You know, July 1st makes the most sense, that's the beginning of our fiscal year, so if we can get someone on board, and, you know, the RTM, they have a much different system in Waterford, which really bogs down some of their, how they get things approved like this, but they still have to go through their vetting process too, so it would start with their done too.
Whenever. All right. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the town council a question, if I might, through the chair.
Of course you can.
Attorney Collins, the fact that this officer could use his or her own personal weapon as opposed to something that was issued by the town, does that raise our level of liability at all, or responsibility?
Well, I think because he's performing a municipal function, I'm certain, because he's performing a municipal function, he would be covered by our insurance policy, whether he uses his personal weapon or a weapon provided by the municipalities.
Can I make a recommendation on what Roseanne just said? Based on the fact, and this doesn't have to be put in the contract, this could just be put in the, you know, in the job description when the person accepts the offer?
Correct.
That they have to qualify if they're going to carry either, allow them to carry 22 rifles in case they have to shoot a fox?